... by a slim margin suggested this inept bigot get on her broom and fly away, validate my statement that this was a modern day witch hunt. But Troy needs to move on and heal. The two recall supporters I spoke with on Election Day while campaigning for Martin Hauerlack said that all but a few would support someone who will stick to city business. So only hardcore liberals will object to my nomination of Wade Fleming for Mayor and former Councilmember Ed Kempin to replace him on council, who I think got the most votes of anyone that was not elected. I'd be okay with Maureen McGinnis. Danae lost my support because of your comment that it didn't have to happen if Mary Kerwin had signed the Clean Campaign Pledge, that hit piece would not have had to occur. If the recall margin was more than 60 percent, which would have been a rejection of Mayor Danae's policies and not the mere personal attack that it was. To be fair to the 48 percent who voted to keep her, the current balance of power must be preserved. Incumbency has a large benefit for whoever is appointed mayor. That's why we have term limits. Wade Fleming has shown willingness to work across the aisle. In fact, many in town are unhappy that he worked past the December deadline for approving the Transit Center. This project did not have the universal support that was portrayed. To make the best applesauce or cider, you need different kinds of apples. My personal favorite are Golden Delicious, Janice Daniels and Wade Fleming, Gala, Doug Teetz, and MacIntosh, Dave Henderson. Although many people like them, we don't have any Red Delicious apples in our fridge. Maureen McGinnis, Dane Slater, Robin Beltramini, Jim Campbell, and Mary Kerwin, or Granny Smiths, Louise Schilling, and Jean Stein. That refers to the tartness of their criticism and partisan power plays, not their age. This was a bad year for apples in Michigan, but Troy had a bumper crab apple crop. We can't let the crab apples from either side of the orchard spoil our applesauce. Those on the left and their supporters won the removal of our mayor, but not by enough to warrant the power shift they want. We have a few of our own crab apples, but nothing like the left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the timer did not work.
Malfunctioned.
Unfortunately. Next to speak is Resident John Cooley. Is the timer working, or did we just?
It was just malfunctioned, just that one time. We fixed it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Over the past year, I have come before this council to speak. I have spoken with anger and disgust, made demands, and leveled accusations. As I have been angered, I have made people angry. But tonight, I do not wish to speak from anger. I wish to speak from optimism and ask this council to remember three simple words that bind us together as a community. Remember the words that begin the Constitution: "We, the people." To be a people, we must acknowledge that we are not bound together by race, nor skin, nor gender, nor religion. We are bound together by choice. We are a people because we choose to believe in the pursuit of liberty and we dedicate ourselves to the proposition that all people are created equal. But how do we act on the proposition that we are all equal? I submit that we follow a very simple rule, one that we are taught as children. It is a rule common to every philosophy and religious tradition. In Hinduism, it is said that one should never do that to another which one regards as injurious to oneself. In Judaism, Rabbi Hillel taught that the whole of the Torah is simple: "That which is hateful to you, do not do to your fellows." To be a good Buddhist, you must not hurt others in ways that you yourself would find hurtful. Islam teaches that as you would have people do to you, do to them, and what you dislike to be done to you, don't do to them. And of course, Christianity. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. So I ask this council, as you begin the work of making this city whole, remember the golden rule. If you hold to it, you hold to the promise of liberty and work to make this city a true community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Mary Ann Benardi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two reasons to speak tonight. One is that I am grieved about the recall, yes. But more so, I am grieved because of the cruelty towards the former mayor, which I witnessed throughout the last year. Most of the comments and social media that I witnessed were so ugly, they could never be repeated. I would never repeat them anywhere. The second reason is to remind you that 48 percent did not approve of the recall. I would also like to thank our former mayor for sticking it out for a year and for not lashing out at those who came to this podium, meeting after meeting, attacking and throwing cruel words at her. You know, Americans are always complaining, it seems to me, that they don't want the polished career politician. Right? Has anybody heard that? I've heard it over and over, read it, heard it. Okay. But then when we get an ordinary citizen who doesn't have past political experience and that person comes and sits on the Troy Council, we saw what happened. We should have expected, yes, there would be a steep learning curve. That's what happens when someone comes to a very large job and does not have previous experience. But Mayor Daniels was not allowed to take a breath, not a breath, without being criticized. I think it is truly amazing that she was able to function at all to the end of her time. It's amazing to me. I never could have done it, and I certainly couldn't have done it with the grace that she did it without coming back at her attackers. Yeah, I'm very much in admiration of that. And my only other thought is I hope that you will select the new mayor from the current elected council members on council, so that we do not have to go down this path again, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Linda Kaima.
I'm a 38-year resident of Troy, and I come here tonight representative of one of many citizens who are here and at home tonight that support this council as you work cohesively in a nonpartisan way to move Troy forward. I have every confidence you will do what's right for our city, its residents, and its businesses, and make us all proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Mayor Gene Stein.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I'm really happy to address this City Council tonight, and I look forward to supporting you as you work to keep Troy a destination point in southeastern Michigan. I'm also proud of my allegiance to the Republican Party. Tonight and most nights of City Council meetings, you will hear from Democrats, Republicans, independents. They will express their respective concerns for their city, and not necessarily on a political platform. But you always must remember that Troy city government is nonpartisan, and City Council must act under nonpartisan principles. Party politics has no place in local city government. I wish all of you good luck, and I thank you for your dedication to Troy's future.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident Jim Wurpudinski. I hope I did that okay.
You're pretty good, Mayor. By the way, I was glad to see and talk to the majority of you at that ceremony here yesterday. It's really appreciated that you come. Well, the sun's shining brightly even though it's raining out. Another good day in Troy. Most of us are ready for a new beginning. It's hard to tell which is a chicken and which is the egg. Does the council reflect the mood of the citizens, or is it vice versa? In either instance, both the council and the citizens need to exercise decorum, discretion, and logical decision-making going forward. And most importantly, let bygones be bygones, got to leave the baggage behind. I have friends and acquaintances on both sides of the divide. Being conservative, I historically have identified more with the conservative side of the divide, which would be like the TCU group. As recently as a year ago, I stood here and referred to some of the trust people who are, shall we say, not so conservative disparagingly as angry women. One of these women, Ellen, sent you this email today, or over the weekend, and she also sent me a copy. And I want you to make sure you really read it. I totally concur with everything she says in there, and she speaks eloquently. Ellen and I think we make a good template that both council and the citizens could embrace to commence the healing in the city. We actually met about six months ago, but just a couple of months ago, we started talking and listening and respecting each other. We found a huge amount of common ground. Our relationship now withstands disagreements seamlessly. A good example would be that I support my friend Martin Hollerick, but does he have Ellen's support? Well, let's just say, not so much, to put it mildly. And yet, we respect each other's opinions and move on from there. Just because we can't agree on everything, we don't feel a need to be nasty and call names. We want to further the greater interests of the residents in Troy. She's also introduced me to some other trust people. They're pretty cool. I also know a lot of cool people in TCU. We just need to respect each other and move on. I no longer call Ellen an angry woman, and she doesn't think of me as the reincarnation of Archie Bunker any longer either. This may not work for everything, but we'd like for you to give respect to Troy. We think this could help the healing process. They're good people on both sides of the divide. We just need to respect each other. And by the way, I want to emphasize the following in Ellen's email. We do appreciate your service. You take a lot of guff. We want nonpartisan representation. We love your choice for city manager, and we want to be part of the solution and to support you as best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to speak is Resident James Savage. I don't know if he...
He left, Mayor.
I don't remember seeing him tonight. Did he leave? Well, that concludes the residents that have signed up or anyone else that's signed up to speak. So I want to thank everybody that spoke tonight for their civility tonight. Let's hope we can all move forward. Next item on the agenda, our council referrals. There are none tonight. That leaves us to council comments. Are there any council members that have comments tonight? Mayor? Councilman Henderson?
If I may, I spoke with Mr. Miller just a little while ago, and there was a comment given to me, and I don't know if there's a appropriate place on council to talk about it, but the grass growth on the median's between 17 and 16 mile road. And I've gotten a lot of feedback from that through social media, and I wonder if Mark could have somebody address that, so that we can get an understanding of that.
Absolutely. Mr. Miller?
Mayor and members of council, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Van Detten, city engineer. He said it's scheduled for cutting this Thursday.
Just a follow-up. I know there were some issues with regard to the plantings there, and that's the reason for the length of the growth. Is there any, do you have any commentary on that? Is that, are we expected to have more problems there, or is the problem going to be?
No. My understanding is the issue is they were unable to cut it because of all the rain.
Okay.
And because it was too soft, and they were unable to put their machinery on there without destroying it. That was the issue, and there should not be any problems with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Next, we're going to move to reports. There are several reports that were given us tonight that I think have, I think that the public would like to hear something about those reports. Does anybody have any report in particular that they would like to bring forward? Councilman Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. I think departmental reports I'd like to focus on, there are no good reports, but we had three good departmental reports, and we may want to get a report on all of them. I have spoken to the people responsible for those reports. The first report is a 2012 Year-to-Date Calls for Police Service, and I spoke to our chief. If you could, if you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us some highlights from that. It's very thorough, a lot of detail. Certainly don't need to go through the whole report. It's available in the package, but maybe some highlights there, chief, would be beneficial. And after that, if I can put you up there, if you want to talk about the ICMA, that's be quick to...
Chief Mayor, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Councilman Fleming stated, the report on the calls for service is rather lengthy. Just to hit on the highlights, the report reflects the professionalism of your police department and the quality of the citizens that we serve. Things are going in the right direction with that. Overall, the major crimes, which the FBI calls Group A crimes, have decreased 5.8 percent over the same time period last year. Just some notable points in that is breaking and entering, which are home invasions and commercial property breaking and entering, are down 33 percent. Motor vehicle thefts are down 23 percent. And weapon law violations are up 66 percent, which for us is only six incidents, because we don't have that many weapons law violations. And the reason I point that out is that shows that the police officers are going out and doing their job and finding these weapons. That doesn't occur unless your officers are out there making traffic stops and checking things out, and that's how they find these weapons. Clearances are going in the right direction. They're going very high. We've had an increase in our Group B crime. Most notable with that is incidents with youth and alcohol, and some alcohol issues. And that's mainly because we had several very large alcohol-related parties. Again, that shows the police officers are going out, doing their job, and not just turning a blind eye to kids with alcohol. We're doing enforcement action. This community has made it very, very, very clear that they expect the police department to take action on alcohol-related issues, and that's what helps us keep fatalities and alcohol-related tragedies down. Arrests are up 7 percent, which is 130 more arrests, which would, you consider the fact that we're down 40 sworn police officers, or 37 sworn police officers. That's a major achievement, that arrests are up. It shows the officers are out there doing a good job and working hard. Traffic violations are up 3.6 percent. At the same time, traffic crashes are down 4.3 percent. So things are going in the right direction. When we do enforcement, you should see a reduction in accidents. That's because we target those intersections where we have accidents. It's mainly the highlights I wanted to touch upon without getting into too much boring detail on numbers and spreadsheets and that kind of stuff for the crime stats. Mayor, you want me to discuss the ICMA report a little bit, or?
Yeah, I think I've talked with other council members regarding the ICMA report, and I think when the new city manager comes on board, we're going to look for maybe a totality of the ICMA reports from all departments. But I think, you know, I'd like to commend you for bringing yours forward tonight and giving us an update on that. And maybe if you could just briefly talk about that. It looks to me, when I looked over the report, to you, you're accomplishing almost every category that was required, so maybe you could just speak briefly on that.
That's a very good observation. Where I counted up while I was waiting this point of the agenda, we've achieved 66 percent, so two-thirds of the points that ICMA said we should do, we've gotten done. There's some other points in there that I'll come back to council hopefully when we get the new manager in address. If we really want to go in those directions based upon reactions of the community and that, there's some things we don't need to do. But we'll come back council and report, make sure we're on the same page with that. We've, as you're aware, this current operating budget, we reduce our budget by almost $5 million. We've reduced the number of sworn personnel in the police department by 33 percent. Forty percent of the command staff, there's been a reduction of 40 percent in our overall command staff. The ICMA detailed something called the 60/40 rule, which was 60 percent of the time the police officer should be busy. They pointed out that once you go over 60 percent, you could be getting into where they're too busy. We started documenting that, and we're at this latest report, we're at 64.3 percent of busy. So we're starting to go over the 60 percent. We'll have to monitor that. We are in the midst of hiring police officers, because we're currently short six. So we may see that change as we get those officers trained and able to patrol on their own. We may push that number back closer to 60 percent, which is where we want to be. We've changed some of our method of operation. We now, with the neighboring jurisdiction, if we have a warrant for somebody from their jurisdiction, that we arrest somebody. Rather than bring them into the police station and go through the booking process, we just turn them over on the road. So we're doing that. That's a great deviation from what we used to do. And we're not arresting everybody for drove while suspended. Much as I would like to do that, I think it's a good thing to arrest people for driving while suspended, unless it's a suspension for cause, such as a drunk driving suspension. We're issuing appearance tickets and impounding their car now, which is a change of how we've had to do things, but it seems to be working out very well. We just want to make sure that everyone realizes that a reduction in service, which is what we've had to do, doesn't mean we're doing poor service. We're still doing quality service. We're just not doing a lot of the same things that we used to do. And if we're going to address this back with the city manager when we do an overall study, we'll condense that down, and I'm sure it'll comply with what you're looking for. Any questions?
Any questions? I just had an observation. You know, when we talk about losing officers, one of the things that concerned me about the reports was the underage drinking parties. And I think some of the times, when you move from being proactive, these are the type of incidences that can start to give warning. And I know the coalition has cut staffing. I know they don't provide the programs that they used to provide. I know the police department in that area is not as proactive as it used to be. And, you know, that concerns me when I see the underage drinking escalating again. And I think as a council, we need to talk about that at some point. So that's what I picked up as a concern to me.
That's a very good point. It takes, it's a multi-pronged approach. It isn't just the police department does that. We have to have the community involved, too. We still work with the coalition, but they've had to reduce a lot of the programs they used to do. They're doing a really good job in focusing on the major programs, but still, it takes money to run those programs with them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions about reports? Just, I didn't know if, Mr. Miller, you wanted to speak anymore on the parks?
Um...
Just to give you an opportunity if you did, but if not, we're okay.
Mayor and members of council, I have in the audience a Justin Breier, who is working, he is an intern in the city manager's office. He's working under the direction of Brent Savant, the planning director. And he came here to answer any questions, and if you could give a summary, I would appreciate it, Justin. It's part of his learning experience as an intern.
I mean, the guy's been here all night. He ought to at least get up there and say something, I think.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Justin Breier. I'm the intern to the city manager. And as Mark stated, I have been working with Brent Savant, the planning director, and Ben Carlisle from Carlisle, Wortman &amp; Associates, to work on updating the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The current plan is set to expire on December 31, 2012. The next five-year plan will cover the years 2013 to 2018. Where we are at this point in the process is we're looking to get public input into the plan, and that'll help us get the data and information that we need to move forward. We are going to have a website available for everyone to visit, and that will contain a survey and a Michigan Community Remarks Tool that will allow people to comment on specific parcels and pieces of property and what they believe should be done with those The Michigan Community Remarks Tool is not something that we have used before. We've been working with Ben Carlisle. He's been helping us with the public input portion. The parcels that we're looking to get information on through the Michigan Community Remarks Tool are pieces of property that have been listed as future park sites in the current plan that have not been developed. But residents can also comment on parcels that have been developed since the last plan was first implemented in 2007. The website, troyrecplan.com/site, will be live on November 26, 2012. And I'm not sure at this point how long we're going to have the survey available, but probably two to three weeks. And we're looking to get as much public input as we can possibly get. The more public input we get, the better. The more that'll allow us to draw conclusions and get a feel for what the community really We took both the survey and the website in front of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. They passed the resolution that is on the subsequent page in support of us moving forward. And if there are any other questions, I can, I would happily answer those.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Real quick, what was the name of the website again for the survey, and when do you think that'll be up and ready for?
Both the survey and the Michigan Community Remarks Tool will be available through troyrecplan.com, T-R-O-Y-R-E-C-P-L-A-N dot com slash site, S-I-T-E.
And when is that up?
That will be up on November 26, which is the first Monday after Thanksgiving. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Miller?
One quick comment. I think the major policy issue that we're identifying in this plan is that we have approximately 13 undeveloped park sites. And with our limited capital resources, we really need input on what we should do with these sites. And some of you may remember, we have even gone to the point where we have done preliminary designs on some of these parks with public input, one which had proposed a dog park. It just becomes, our issue is, with very limited capital resources, how do we spend them? And it is very unlikely we're going to be able to develop those park sites, to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of business is our study session. So we're going to be in recess until 9:30, and we will reconvene in the boardroom to discuss the succession process. I would hope that everybody got the yellow sheet from Mr. Miller and Ms. Bloom and Ms. Bitner regarding the proposed timeline for the succession process. I appreciate that because we do have some time issues here. So, in an effort to try and expedite our study session and keep it orderly, unless there's an objection, I think the first order of business would be to see if we can get a consensus right off the bat as to whether we should pick somebody from the current council or go outside of council. It seems like that should be an easy decision to make off the bat, and then we can proceed from there. So, what I would like to do so that everybody gets an opportunity is to just move around the table and just indicate whether you are in favor of choosing somebody from within the council or if you want to open it up to candidates outside of council. So, keeping that in mind and seeing as I'm looking at Councilman Teetz, I wonder if you could start off with that.
I think probably somebody on council, considering the reasons that someone's been elected and the public has had at least some, some say in it at some point. So, that's my head's at.
Councilman Henderson?
I agree with Councilman Teetz. Should be someone on council. It would be an elected individual.
Councilman McGinnis?
I agree. I mean, I think to some degree, we're going to be making some decisions based on the best of our ability as a council. And, you know, any additional help that we can have to make the right choice. I think this will set some parameters. There was an election. People didn't have an opportunity to vote. People are familiar with the six of us that are sitting on council. And, I do also like the added bonus that that person will be more familiar with the things that we've been doing as a council, at least for the last year. And, they'll be familiar with how we try to run our meetings. So, I think that that's important as well for us to have a smooth transition. So, I would also agree.
Councilman Campbell?
It's where you sit.
I'm not moving around that much.
It used to be over here.
Okay, I agree. I think it's got to be somebody who's been elected by the people. So, I think we go from the people we have on the council right now and pick somebody.
Thank you. Councilman Thon?
Yeah, I think we're unanimous here, Mayor. We've got good qualified people here. And, I think we just smooth the transition. If we could choose someone currently serving on council, I think there's benefits for that.
I agree 100%. I've gotten some emails that have indicated that we should take persons that were involved in the previous elections and just put them in place, and we can move forward rather quickly. And, for all the reasons that you stated, I think we should keep the decision, the mayor and one of the six of us. So, having said that, I think we can quickly move again to see who's interested. As we know, I think City Attorney Bloom has indicated that for some members of council, they would have to resign.
Correct.
And, if they were interested in remaining on council and didn't get the appointment, they would have, or even if they got the appointment, they would have to run again in November of 13. So, I don't know if there's anybody on council that is interested in doing that. But, I would like to do the same thing that I just did, is move around the table and see if there's an interest.
Does that statement go for everybody? I mean, obviously, we have three of us that obviously would have to resign. What about the other three? I mean...
There is a process, and maybe...
Yeah, let's see if Attorney Bloom can...
What would that process be?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. There are three persons whose term already expires, three of the current members whose term already expires, November of 2013. For those persons, you know, again, since there is a unanimous, you're all unanimous in your decisions to appoint from within. So, because of that, one of you will have to resign to our city council seat. And, if you reach consensus of that tonight, then we can work with that person. And then, you would, at your very next meeting, you would appoint the person as the mayor, the appointed mayor, to serve for the unexpired term expiring November 11 of 2013. And then, the next action item for city council at the next meeting would be to accept the resignation. So, the appointment would be contingent upon the acceptance of the resignation. And then, the resignation will be the next item that would be accepted. And then, after that, you would have 30 days within which to fill your extra council seat, the vacant council seat. So, it'd be 30 days from the date that the appointment is made.
Very simple. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Just a clarification, that the individual that would submit their resignation contingent on becoming the mayor then could retract that resignation prior to?
This is not the, because it's a resignation, the irrevocable part of it is not, it's not relevant. So, this is just a straight resignation. And, you can't shorten, I mean, for others, it would be shortening their terms. But, for the three members whose term already expires, it would not be. But, again, the appointment would be contingent upon the acceptance of the resignation. And then, council, if more than one person submitted a letter of resignation, you would hopefully only act on one of those letters of resignation.
Hopefully is not always a good term.
Well, no. I mean, we don't want to have two vacancies on council. And so, we will help facilitate that so that whoever is vacating their council seat to be mayor, there's only that person who will have vacancy.
Councilman McGinnis?
Well, just to clarify, there would have to be a positive action taken then by council subsequent to the vote that we take to appoint the mayor. There'd also have to be a subsequent positive action that the council takes to then enforce the whatever resignations have been brought before us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Assuming the council would only move forward and take action on one resignation, that being the person that we've picked as mayor, the other one, if we don't take any action on it, it's not going to take effect. Is that right?
Assuming that there is more than one, then anyone who is not appointed mayor can retract their resignation. And, council would not have the opportunity to act on that.
I think in layman's term, it's kind of like buying a house on contingency.
Yep.
I get that.
Okay. So, having said that, I think the best thing to do is see who's interested. So, maybe we could move around the table again, and maybe if some council member could just indicate whether they're interested, that may whittle it down at least to maybe two or three or whatever. So, we went this way last time. Maybe Councilman Thon, we could move your way and put you on the spot first, if you're interested, or...
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am interested. I'm one of the council members. His term is up next year. And, currently have no plans to run again. Let's tell you that, for mayor or for council either. I've served seven years going on my eighth year. And, I think after a couple of terms after eight years, he needs some new blood. He needs fresh. But, I'm the longest-serving council member, having served seven years. Closest council person to me served three years. Two of you served three years. I've served seven. I think I've demonstrated, hopefully, that I'm able, I try to build consensus that I don't have a strong allegiance to any group in the city. And, I do what's best for the city. I think evidence of that is a transit center that we were voting on tonight. And, I took a position on that and was able to reach a compromise, working with you, paying extra overtime and doing that. That wasn't a popular decision. And, caught a lot of flack over that. But, in my opinion, it was the best decision for this city. And, was not thinking about this generation, but the next generation. And, I think we have to do that. I think it's important to whoever's mayor that we be civil about this. I expect this process to be very civil. Hopefully, we can reach a conclusion tonight. But, yes, I'm definitely interested and would be honored to serve as mayor for the one year. And, really, having served seven years, finish, finish well and build consensus. And, really, I think we have to... And really, I think we had a good meeting tonight, I'd like to build on that and just even improve going, going forward. So, yes, definitely interested.
Thank you. Councilman Campbell?
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I would be interested in serving as the mayor. It's obviously not something that I could have really planned for to be in this position, but now that we are in this position, it's something that I would be willing to do for one year as well. No intentions of running for, for the position either when it comes up again. I, I think just as a council person, we've all been through some contentious issues. If you look back on the last three years, we've accomplished a lot. We've also gone through a lot as individuals and as council people and I've tried to the best of my ability to stay neutral and to stay nonpartisan. But, you know, in the last week, I've done a lot of thinking, I'm sure, as you have also, Councilman Fleming and everybody else that's sitting here, you know, what you would hope to accomplish by, by putting your name out there. And, you know, my goal would be that if, if anyone was going to consider supporting me, that somehow we would be able to reach a decision where we could all agree on it. And that's something that's really important to me. So, I don't know how we're going to accomplish that. I think we're all kind of walking into some uncharted territory tonight and we kind of just have to see how things go. But I wanted to put it out there that I would be willing to do that. And I guess we'll see where the conversation goes from here.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
I am not interested. I'm the consummate subordinate.
Councilman Teetz?
No, thank you.
Well, you know, I think I've made it known to anybody that's close to me and even on this council that, you know, four, four years is a long time to serve in the council. I certainly would be interested if there was consensus to just leave it the way it is, as it happened, and this is the, I think, the luck of the draw with whoever's mayor pro temp continues. And then we don't have to worry too much about doing anything else. So, I, I would be interested if there's consensus. I think Maureen would be a good choice from my perspective. But I would certainly, if there's consensus, I would, I would also be honored to continue. So, having said that, at least we're down to three. So, I don't know how you, you all feel, but I don't want this to turn into some negative, contentious battle. You know, I think the community needs us to come together and make, make a decision and not let somebody else make a decision, if that's even a viable option, which I don't think it is, but I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. But I just think that I'd like to do this, if there's no objection, similar to what we did when we chose the city manager position. And that's possibly unless anybody wants to say anything else about a selection or who they may want or who they, or they don't want. But it may be a show of hands as we move the names forward and see where, where that falls. And we may get a decision sooner than we thought if we do it that way. So, if anybody does, wants to speak, please speak. But if not, maybe we could just have a show of hands when I mention a name and we'll see where that falls and then we can move on from there.
Just one vote?
No, no.
This question?
No, I think, you know, the way we did it before is, you know, let's, you know, just drag it and stick. There's four for one, four for another, and three for another, that kind of gets it down to two.
So, each person would have two votes then, when you're going to...
Well, the way...
While we discuss that, because rather than they get...
The way we did it before is we whittled it down to a certain number and then we each voted, who, or shouldn't use the word voted. We raised our hand.
Consensus.
And, and some had seven, some had five, and some had two. When we started to whittle it down, unless my recollection is different. If you want to just do one vote, that, that's fine too.
I think, I'll just tell you where I'm coming from. I, I'm going to support Councilman Fleming for seniority sake. The important thing to me is that this doesn't get into politics of who's running for what office or people feel like, you know, it was used as a platform or whatever. And as long as he's willing to state that, you know, he's not going to be running for city council or mayor or anything like that, and we can take your word on it, that's pretty important to me. And, you know, it's one of these things where it's the most senior member of council and we just want to do, I think, what I guess to me would be kind of the logical step. Then against him, you can always just carry logic. And then, I mean, second point is, I guess he served as mayor pro temp at some point and so he has that experience and so forth from those days as well. So, that's my two, my two cents.
Councilman Campbell?
So, for, I guess, picking, it was a pick. In my first terms would be Maureen and for a few reasons. The seniority is great, everything else, but I think out of everybody we're talking about here, she has been the middle-of-the-road person. She has never taken a side on recall, other people have. She's been very down the middle, she's very professional. And I think she puts on the face, as we spoke about, I think with our new city manager, who's a very aggressive guy, a young guy. I think the combination of those two would put the, the right face on the city of Troy to move forward as a very, very progressive, young city. And I think with her intelligence, I think she'd be a perfect mayor. So, my support would go to her first and if we can't get that, then clearly Dane.
Because of his youth.
Because, well, he's got 70% lights on his beard, so I think we have to move him forward.
Nice teasing you, Dane. You're good news.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes, since we're all logging in, first off, the, the three that were mentioned, Maureen, Wade, Dane, I would have zero reservations about any of the three of them taking control and handling the position for the year. All their terms are expired. It's, it's going to mean zero change on council, in my opinion. That said, certainly Dane or Wade, being a senior council member, I think makes a lot of sense. Also, with regard to the transit center, you know, I'm not the, as you know, I had an opposing viewpoint, but he certainly got that to happen through reconciliation and compromise. So, you know, I certainly think he has the aptitude to be able to pull that up in the future ongoing. And to echo Doug's remarks, I don't necessarily think that whoever we put in the, in the mayor's seat should, should have a leg up going into another election with regard to running, you know, in the incumbency situation. So, again, as, as far as Wade is concerned, as long as he's willing to commit to what he's stated he's, he's committed to not running, I think that's at least a neutral, neutral way to head into the November 2013 elections.
I have something to say. I know we're having this discussion about the leg up and I can see that, you know, I can see that. But I do have some concern and this really has nothing to do with me personally, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking about this as a council. If, if everyone wants to hear that the people that are interested in stepping up to serve, and that's really what this is, this isn't making a decision to run for mayor, this is stepping up in a situation that we could not have predicted and, you know, all three of us being willing to assume a leadership role, which I think is great. But, you know, I, I think in terms of asking, you know, everyone that's, that's willing to step up to the leadership role to disavow the fact that they're going to be not only the mayor, but also a council person, I'm not sure if we want to do that. Because I'd like to come to some sort of agreement here, but I definitely don't want to force my colleagues, you know, all of which I think do a fine job, to put themselves in a position right now to say that they're not going to run for council, you know, somewhere down the line. If they decide to do that, I don't think it really puts them at a leg up because they would be on council anyway, whether or not they run for mayor. So, if that's something that we want to do as a group, I think that's fine. You know, I think we're more than willing to do that, but at the same time, I don't know if there's really a point to forcing that issue at this point. Because then essentially, you're lacking out three people that have served the city well from doing anything to so we can make a decision about one person. And like I said, I really honestly do think that the three of us could probably sit here and, and say that, but I don't know if that's really going to benefit the city in the long run to, to get people to make that kind of statement at this point, you know, not knowing what, what will be happening next year. So, I guess I, I would want us to be really clear about what we're doing, you know, before we make that decision.
Councilman Flynn?
Yes, I kind of, we all know this is a weak mayor form of government. But having said that, the timing demands on the mayor can be pretty significant. Having watched mayors for seven years and gone to open houses and so forth and ribbon cuttings. And I think that's an important part of the process to be able to attend. And I know Councilwoman McGinnis has made a special effort to do that and I applaud you for that. My situation is I am very flexible. I've been consulting in the past, I've worked with companies in the past. I'm willing to put that on hold because I know this is an important time, this next year's really important. But to focus as much attention as needed to really help build, help businesses, welcome businesses in the town, make appearances, do whatever is necessary. And I know that that's, that's, it can be demanding. And I just say that I can do that, have the flexibility to do that. I am retired, I'm not a position where I have to work every day, fortunately. And I'd be willing to do that, just put the time and extra effort into this. Because I think it's important. I think we've gone through a very difficult year and I think we need to, to build and do some consensus building. And I'm really proud of this again, just like to see us move forward. I think we're, tonight was a very good meeting, we just build on that. But I'm willing to put some things on, on hold and devote the time that's necessary really to be a mayor as needed.
Well, unfortunately, I think I can see where this is going soon. I'm not going to sit here and toot, toot my horn. I, I, you know, I know Maureen's never missed a meeting since she's been elected. I've never missed a meeting. And I think anybody that would sit here today and say they know exactly what they're going to do one year from, from now, I, I don't, I don't know about that, okay? But I certainly know what I want to do, you know, a year from now. But, you know, things could change. I think things could change for Councilman Fleming just as well as me and if three people stepped up to run next time and somebody talked to him and said, "Hey, listen, you, we can't lose you right now." You know, you never know what might happen. But quite frankly, I've never been a proponent of seniority, okay? I worked in the police department a long time. And if we just promoted people by seniority, I don't think we'd have as good a police department as we do today with the testing and the knowledge and the interviews and the things that you have to do to get promoted. Many fire departments promote on seniority and I think they'll, they would tell you that that's probably not the best way to do things. Even in the private, private world, I don't think they ever do that. So, well, Wade and I are what I would consider senior, we've been around. So, I think we should just take a, take a straw vote and we've all had a chance to say what we need to say and see where it goes. And if it is three to three, we'll have an opportunity to speak again and see if we can't come to some consensus so that the citizens have a feeling that we can work together. So...
Question?
Question, Mr. Campbell?
For, for attorney, let's say at the end of the night, we are stalemated at three and three. There is no solution, what, what happens?
Well, you do have a little bit of time here. You need to appoint a mayor by December 9th. So, you've got the next meeting and then the December 3rd meeting where you could do that. If you wait till the December 3rd meeting however, and you decide to go with the interviewing of other candidates, that your time is shortened if you wait. But you certainly can do that. The charter requires you to reach consensus and appoint a, a mayor and it requires that to be done within 30 days. There is nothing, black letter, that says what happens if that doesn't occur. There are a number of things that could happen. We could have a lawsuit. I could be directed by council to file a lawsuit for a declaratory action and we, you know, could maybe get some help from the courts or the governor also could potentially step in. All of those are possibilities. I have not done in-depth research on that, but all of those are viable possibilities. But again, I just would reiterate that there is an obligation for you to reach consensus on an appointment.
Councilman Henderson?
When we, when we say straw poll or whatever terminology we're going to use, are we going to just one individual or two? I think when we did the city manager, we named a couple that way, there was more of a...
Yeah. That's where I was moving when I first talked and then I thought I got a little resistance that we should do just one, but quite frankly, I think we may be able to move a little bit if we... You should be able to vote for any of the three, I think, in the first phase, okay? And if one council member gets five and one gets three and three, I think that's a, kind of gets us a conclusion. Unless somebody sees it differently and just wants to vote. You know, I'll go along with the majority, but it just seems to me that you ought to have a vote on everybody, each one of the candidates, you ought to have a vote on that for the first... And maybe I shouldn't be using the word vote, but at least a show of hands for each candidate. And maybe somebody's going to get five, that five people can live with, you know?
So, no vote means that you specifically don't want that person, but maybe two votes towards an individual means that you could...
That's, that's, that's what we did last time for the city manager.
It's pretty difficult when you got six people versus seven. See, and that complicates it mathematically.
Well, maybe not. If you, if you don't vote for somebody, it still could be three or it could be two. Or it could be five, or it could be six. And if somebody gets six, we're done. Probably if somebody gets five, we're done.
Somebody gets four.
I think it's, bottom line is, if somebody gets four, you're done.
Let's two people get four.
Let's two people get four.
Two people get four and then we'll talk about that, you know?
Why don't we just have one vote, let's have a heads up, you know, just go around the table right now.
I thought we just did that.
Oh, so that's three of them, I mean...
That's what I heard.
No, we didn't get a vote. Didn't vote that way.
Because you got three... Why don't we just declare our favorite first choice and then, you know, maybe there's four votes just that way. Why don't we just declare our favorite first choice, and then, maybe there's four votes just that way. I don't know.
I didn't hear that, but if you...
First choice. Just do your first choice. And then narrow it down. You've got your first choice, and then go from there.
I actually like the other way, because it gives people the opportunity to maybe give their top two.
Maybe did it for the city manager.
That's how we did it for the city manager. You can give your top two, and then we whittle it, we go from three to two then, okay? And then we'll have a show of hands for those final two. I think that's a better system, personally.
But city manager worked out well.
An up and down vote, just one right now will at least let us know if we have a stalemate.
Correct.
So maybe go there and then maybe play a...
I just, I just heard that, that we can do that again, but I think I just heard that.
Is that a definitive...
Okay. I thought we did, but, okay, Councilman Fleming? For, no, could you vote for yourself?
We're voting?
Yes.
We're voting for Councilwoman?
No, we'll show hands for, out of the three, the three, we'll show hands for you.
For me?
For your vote. Your vote.
Voting for myself.
Okay.
Only vote.
Councilman Campbell?
Maureen.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Mr. Fleming?
By your side. By your side. Councilwoman McGinnis.
Okay, so we're down two. So we're down two.
Well, I, I don't know if it would have changed it all, though, if everyone had two votes. I think that was the point, that we were trying to see if there was somebody that was going to come up ahead.
I think we should do it now, and let's do it the other way with everybody involved.
It's, but if you're saying mathematically, if you're saying everybody has to vote twice?
You get a vote for each candidate. That seems like that's the way it should be to start things off. You ought to get a, you ought to, everybody ought to get a vote for each candidate, like we did for the city manager. I believe that's what we did.
Doesn't make sense.
Are you saying that they, each person has two votes? They have to vote for two persons? Or are you saying each person gets three votes?
The way that I thought we did it before is that we'll have a show of hands for each candidate. Some might get five, some might get four, some might get three. And then we, whoever was the low person in that, we erase that off the board. Then we had a show of hands for number one, number two.
So each person could get, you could vote for all three candidates, or you could vote for just one candidate?
Or you could vote for two candidates.
Or you could vote for two candidates. Like if there's two candidates that you could support...
Doesn't make sense. But Dane, you voted for Maureen, so, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Slater, or Mayor Slater.
If I would have had a vote for, I may have voted for myself, you know, if, you know, if we were going to vote, have the opportunity to vote for all three. You know, by, if I voted for myself, then Councilman Fleming would have won. So, you know, to me, that's, that really wasn't a good way to do it, because I decided whether it was going to be three for Councilwoman McGinnis, or if Councilman Fleming was going to win.
I think we're on between Councilman McGinnis and that's where we can see.
Unless there's a consensus here, then we should, we should do it the other way. You know, where there's an opportunity to get to top two with everybody having, you know, some people, somebody may have, like Councilman Campbell suggested, he has a one and a two. He never really got an opportunity to say who his number two was. And I never got an opportunity to say who my number two was, the way that we did it. And neither did you. And neither did anybody.
And at the end of the day, it really should be a decision that we can all live with. Not necessarily, you know, the only decision that we can see. That's kind of the way I'm looking at it. And I, maybe that might bring us a little bit closer to, you know, some sort of agreement if it's a decision that we have.
Yeah, I mean, maybe your two will be in line with two or three other people's two. And maybe that might help, or it might help somebody from another number two.
Councilman Henderson?
A piece of paper, throw them in, count them, or...
We did them on the board.
Oh, we did them on the board.
Just three numbers, that's all. The deal is, though, in this situation, you may have several individuals only votes once, other people vote twice.
I think everyone should get two votes.
Everybody should get two votes.
That really gets distorted.
That's what we did last time.
Because if you think about it, when we were doing this for the city manager selection, if everybody only voted for their first choice, or the one person that that was the strongest, we would have never made it to the decision. And so I think that's the only reason that I think it might be worth trying to do it this way, because that's how it ended up, I mean, honestly, that's how it ended up working out so well for us for the city manager decision. I know there was a bigger pool of candidates, but, I mean, there were five people there when we whittled it down. There's three people here. And at the end of the day, it was, you know, there were good qualified candidates, and we kind of had to figure out a way to come to a consensus, and that's how we did it.
But statistically, you've got three of the candidates in you. You really only got three people choosing. Three. You've got three candidates, probably obviously would vote for themselves. Unless, well, you voted for Maureen and one other person on board, that would be a four.
Quite frankly, I think the only way that it remains a stalemate is if you do it with one vote. Because if you do it with two votes, you're forced to give a vote for one of, two of the three, instead of one of the three. So the decision will be made rather easily if we give two votes. The only reason to continue it at one vote is there's a fear, there's a fear for a second, you know, to vote for two people within the three.
Well, we knew it was going to be a kind of a split decision, or it could have had a potential for that. So, you know, we have that going for us.
I think the only way...
To try to break that is what our goal is to break that.
The only way we're going to break that is to have two votes.
Because I don't think any one of us wants to go to the next step and have to deal with that.
What's the next step?
If we stifle the two votes and only give one vote, then, then you're, I don't think you're doing the process the way you should do it. Everybody should get two votes out of the three, and that will, that will give us a decision. I'm going to go around the table. I'm going to see if we got consensus, because if you, if you only, if you're agreeing to only one vote, then you're in fear. You're in fear of hearing what everybody else's second vote is.
I, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's the way you should phrase things. Especially if we're trying to de-politicize things, I don't think that's appropriate. I really don't, to characterize people as being afraid of one thing or another, that's not appropriate. I guess I was hoping this would be just a real de-politicized thing, where we wouldn't have to play games around, you know? I take that back. That was inappropriate. We wouldn't have to work around and do this for a while. If somebody is willing to not run for office by their own choice, I think that says a lot. And they're willing to, I think it's important that they stay out of the campaign process, and don't give money, or don't endorse, and stay out of all that, because, you know, I think the public said during public comments very clearly, they don't want to go back to the same old, same old. And I think we need to ask that of the person that's going to be our next acting mayor. And we can, I think that's something very important. And there was comments about what the optics of a person that's selected. And I don't think that needs to be the final thumb on the scale one way or another. I don't think that's an appropriate way to make decisions by what a decision looks like, rather than what in substance it will be. And so that, I think there's room for compromise. And I'm anxious to hear some further discussion. I mean, you know, it assumes everyone's sucking them out on this, but I've yet to hear response to these things. I mean, I appreciate what you said about folks not being forced to not run, or whatever, but I think that's actually really important right now, because many people have said they're tired of seeing the partisanship or the politics. I think it's just important to be able to know that the mayor for the next 10 months isn't going to be taking part in any of that. You won't see their signs, or see their name, or whatever. And I think, I think that is actually a value to moving our city forward. And then whoever they want to vote, or whoever the electorate wants to elect as the next mayor and the next city council, they, you don't have to ever have the feeling that this was a decision that had any sort of political consequence. And that's what my hope was going into this meeting, is that we just can make a decision. I think everybody agrees that any of the candidates would do a fine job. But I was hoping for a decision that doesn't have ramifications come election time. Let's, let's put that aside, and I'm asking for a step of compromise here, because I think that's what our city needs right now, is to be able to say, okay, this makes sense, because we don't need to have folks second guessing and trying to calculate how this will affect things. So.
What do you mean by compromise?
I think, I think compromise is to say that a person that's not, that's willing to say that they're not going to run again, and that has the criteria of things I outlined before. I mean, Councilman Fleming has those criteria. It won't change anything other than he'll be gabbling in a meeting. But I think it, it puts aside the arguments or the debate of, well, they chose such and such person because of somehow it was this or that. And I think it's, I think, I think that makes sense for our city, is that we just need to say, fine, you know, this person gavel in meetings, but at least we know for sure that they're done. That they won't, they'll be done. And sometimes people say, well, we don't know what someone's going to decide to do in the future. But I guess I, I take it in confidence that when Councilman Fleming says he's done, he's done. And this is from someone that, you know, has shown a willingness to compromise in the past, because he and I strongly disagreed on the Transit Center back in the day when that decision was made. But when he told me his decision, he stuck with it. So, those are my heads up.
Well, I think we can debate the Transit Center till, now until doomsday, but there are four council members that are responsible for that moving forward. If any one of them would have voted no, we wouldn't have a Transit Center today. So, I, you know, there were a lot of things about the Transit Center that went on that people don't even know about. So, I don't really want to give a leg up to anybody on that, quite frankly. So, having said, I think, I, I'm going to bring this up again. I think you ought to get a vote for two out of three and see where it goes. We saw what happened when you got one vote. It was three to three. So, we said, I thought somebody said, let's see where that goes. And if that doesn't go somewhere, then we'll do the two out of three. So, I don't know why we should, you know, if there's consensus, let's move forward and do two out of three and see where that goes. That seems to be the logical step next for me. Is there consensus for that?
Not here.
Okay.
We get it before.
Councilman Henderson?
Again, I don't see any, any way to break a three to three discussion here, other than go in that direction. And I think it is incumbent on us to try to get this resolved without having to go through the legal system, have the governor step in, and make a complete mockery of this past year and everything that that's about. So, whatever it takes to get us past the three to three tie is what I'm, what I'm all about.
Are you okay with moving forward with a two to two at this point then?
I don't know. Let's, let me, let me think about that for a little bit. Maybe there's another way to accomplish that. I'm just not sure. I don't know if that's the appropriate way. I don't know if it's the best way, the worst way, or for what. But it did work in the city manager situation, it seemed, even though I was on the, the losing end of one of those, one of those votes.
Well, I think you had number two, but it worked out one and two in that regard, so.
I'm looking around the table. I'm telling you right now, put a mathematician in here, and he'd tell you, you get two votes, there's no way that I'm going to win. It's going to be Maureen or Dane. They'll vote for each other one time. I'll vote one time. Mathematically, let's don't kid ourselves. This is a setup. You tell me how it won't work.
One...
Is you going to vote two to...
I don't think, I don't think that's appropriate.
I think that's...
As Councilman teaches, that's not proper. This is, that's the way we did it for the city manager position. This isn't a setup. This is just, just following what we did before. When you have three candidates, I think you ought to find out who your top two of those three are. You whittle one off right off the bat. It, mathematically, maybe that would happen, but I'm just saying, there isn't, what other process can you use but to, to do it that way? Or continue with what it is today, you know, by the luck of the draw. I, you know, I don't know, I don't know where else to go. I'm only bringing...